Another 20 seconds and then we'll make a start. Thank you. Welcome all. Thanks for joining us for the third webinar for Carers Week this week. The focus of the session today will be on carers and dementia, recognising there is such a correlation between the two. And it's so important we get that support right. We've got some fantastic speakers today. So we've got Mark and Michelle, who I'll be handing over to in a moment. Before I do though, just a quick bit of housekeeping. Do you mind just putting the slides on screen please, Natalie? Thank you very much. Next slide please. So just a quick reminder that we'll be recording this session. So the purpose of that will be that you can then share it far and wide afterwards. You can share it with colleagues who might not have been able to attend today. Or you can watch it back if you need to. And also just to mention that we do have a Q and A function available as well. So you'll see at the top, sort of, yeah, the bar at the top, where you can ask any questions or comments throughout the session. What we'll try and do as well is do a bit of a mop up at the end if there's time where we'll do a bit of a Q and A session for any key points raised. So please do make the most of that, make use of that. If there's anything that's burning or needs clarification, please do ask away. And we'll try and respond today to that. If not, we can take that away and respond afterwards. Thank you very much. Next slide please, Natalie. So really pleased to say, like I said before, we have some fantastic speakers. We've got Mark Neville and Michelle Burrows joining us today. I'll let them introduce themselves and yeah, talk to you more about the session.
Thank you, Ben. Good morning, everyone. Thank you very much for giving up the next half hour to listen to us. Hopefully you'll find it of interest. So as Ben said, I'm Mark Neville. I work for the Alzheimer's Society. I've been with the society for about 12 years. And prior to that, I was a carer for eight years. I'm a community development coordinator. So my role really, I think in a nutshell, certainly part of my role is to work with organisations, businesses, services across Essex. I'm funded through Essex County Council and the Alzheimer's Society to get services to have a better understanding of the needs of people living with dementia, affected by dementia, including carers, and then to tailor their services to be more inclusive of people living with dementia. So I work very closely with social care. I work very closely with GPs. I work very closely with hospitals, et cetera. And you would expect me to say that. But I'm also working very closely, for example, with Stantford Airport. I'm working very closely with NatWest Bank. And at the moment, my colleagues and I are working with around 300 organisations across Essex. I won't go into any more details about that at the moment, but I'll pass you over to Michelle, if I may, my colleague.
Thanks, Mark. Good morning, everyone. Thank you ever so much for having us today. I am Michelle Burrows and I'm a Service User Involvement Officer for Alzheimer's Society. So my role involves working directly with people with dementia and their carers, loved ones, to help them raise awareness of dementia within their community, so within businesses and organisations, with the aim of improving accessibility, understanding and helping to reduce barriers that they might face. So one example is the work we've done recently with First Bus. Some people I worked with said that travel in cultures that are on the buses was really tricky for many reasons. So my role there is to engage PR managers within First Bus to get them into a meeting, to hear people's voices. And from that, we collaborated and co-produced a leaflet for bus drivers to help raise awareness of how they can support people on the buses. And that's my role. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So today, the agenda is very much, we've done the introductions, we're just going to talk a little bit about the impact of dementia. We're talking about supporting carers. And as Ben said, we have allowed sort of 10 minutes for questions and answers. And I would ask people, you're giving up your time. I think it'd be really helpful if you came away from this thinking that we'd answered some of the questions you might have. So please feel free to ask any questions, however difficult. We're happy to take them on. Next slide, please. Thanks, Natalie. So what we all know already, and I think this is probably everything, you know, you would know this, but I think it's worth reiterating, is that caring for someone with dementia will often negatively impact upon a carer's physical wellbeing, their emotional wellbeing, their social wellbeing. And we hear time and time again about how caring can lead to increased stress, depression, social isolation, difficult family relationships, financial difficulties and ultimately premature death. And it's worth saying, again, sort of touching on from the sort of premature death, why that is actually happening. Well, some of that is around people are too busy looking after their loved ones to look after their own health needs. And they're much more likely to ignore their own health needs. But also because of the additional stress that's often associated with caring. For example, other family members might not understand or be very empathetic to that person's difficulties in caring for a loved one. Friends don't necessarily understand what someone's going through and are more likely to to stop seeing a friend if they are a carer. And services, in reality, don't often understand the true meaning of caring for someone. There's obviously the financial strains, which we know can lead to feelings of suicide and desperation and anxiety. There is limited respite care. People don't necessarily know that respite care exists in the first place. And there is no or very limited mental health support for carers out there. And what is available often can take weeks, months before you can actually access the service. And that's assuming that also you can get to a service one way or another, and someone else can look after the person you're caring for. Next slide, please. So what we already know, over 982,000 people in the UK have a formal dementia diagnosis. Diagnosis rates stand around two thirds at the moment. So you could perhaps add another third to that figure. So it is actually over a million. It's estimated that between 1.6 and 2 million people in Britain will have this terminal disease by 2040. Now, that's assuming that nothing changes. There are things that might mean that that figure will go up. And there are things that mean that that figure might come down. A person is diagnosed formally in the UK every three minutes of 24/7. And it's currently projected that one in three of us will live with dementia at some point during our lifetime. And that two out of three of us will be affected by dementia at some point. More young people are being diagnosed with dementia than ever before. And we, as the Alzheimer's Society, set up a service specifically for younger people, those under the age of 65. And Michelle has done a lot of work with the Young Onset Dementia Group. And those are people that are often in their 40s, their 50s and certainly their 60s. And last year, we were asked to see if we could provide support to someone that was actually a lady of 32, living with dementia, end of life care, and she had two very young children. And the needs of younger people are often far different from, say, someone in their 80s or their 90s. And dementia is a life limiting disease. It kills more women over the age of 65 than any other disease. Now, one of the reasons for that is because women do tend to live two years longer, so they're more likely to get dementia. But also it's been linked with other health conditions such as the menopause, et cetera. I think also it's really worth bearing in mind, any one of us could wake up tomorrow with dementia. It doesn't choose. It's, you know, one can, we reckon about a third of cases can be prevented, but two thirds can't at the moment. So this can affect any one of us, not just as a carer, but actually as someone living with dementia. The Alzheimer's Society recently did a survey of carers talking about what their experiences were of dealing with services. And these are some of the statements that people made. I will read these out if I may. So one person said, "My experience and those are people I know is that service providers and commissioners are not good at listening and following up later. We need to know that action has been taken to prevent things happening again, and I always offer and want to be involved in this." Another person said, "I attended a meeting, so clearly a tick box, a tick boxing exercise. It was insulting. Nothing was done" on the part of the attendees at, sorry, I think the, at ease or to look at their comfort. To put the, I think that's to put the attendees at ease or to look at their comfort. No water was offered, toilets not indicated. The person took no notes. Another person says, "Staff lack dementia awareness to encourage with people with dementia about their care." I think I might have to go back to our head office and say that we might need to look at the wording on this. Another person said, "Involve people with dementia when health and social care are being planned or commissioned. Commissioners in particular need to hear the dementia voice. People want to help services and commissions learn from lived experience." Someone else said, "Staff think they know better, so don't value lived experience. Their response was that they were the professionals, so knew more about it, as in my condition, than I did." And there's stories we hear quite frequently from people. People don't feel that they're being listened to, or they feel that they're being rushed, or they feel that a decision is being made about their needs and their care in advance of the meeting, or certainly in the early stages of the meeting. One of the real benefits of working for the Alzheimer's Society, my background's in social care. But when I was a dementia advisor, which is sort of a social works, especially sort of social worker for dementia, one of the things I was really, really pleased about when I started that role was I was given time to spend with people when I was doing an assessment. It wasn't a 20 minute turnaround. I could spend 40 minutes with someone. I could spend an hour with someone. And certainly for a lot of people with dementia, you need to spend 40 minutes or an hour with them. You need to spend that time with them before they start to maybe repeat themselves. You need to spend that time with them to see how they are actually coping and in reality, how they're coping. I remember my loved one being assessed by a social worker and the social worker was saying to my loved one, "Oh, you know, you do this on a Sunday, you go to church on a Sunday." And my loved one was saying, "Yes, I do. I go to church every Sunday." And she hadn't been to church for three years. And I remember my father being really quite frustrated that she was telling these people things that she believed, but actually weren't the reality. And so I do think that when you're doing an assessment, you do need to spend more time with people. And we also need to be led by the individual and where that's not possible, the carer. Next slide, please, Natalie. So this is the supportive ad. We're not going to go through this. We've got a leaflet and we'll be sending this leaflet out to everybody after. And this is just showing you what the leaflet is for Essex Community Dementia Support Services. Probably one of the most important things you can take away from today is our helpline number and contact details. We have a helpline. It's there to support people living with dementia, their loved ones, their carers, organisations that are interested in being more dementia aware. And it will also offer lots of advice and support. And we're very, very lucky in Essex. We are very well commissioned by Essex County Council. So we do have quite a lot of services that are available to people. Next slide, Natalie. Thank you. So this is an example of some of the services that are available to people. So we do provide support to people in the community. We work on post diagnostic support. We support young people with young onset dementia. We support carers. We are very much about reconnecting with the community, which is about getting people that maybe have been isolated from their community back into their community. And that's a role of the CDC, but also other colleagues within the Alzheimer's Society. We have a hospital discharge service. We provide crisis support. We work very closely, as Michelle was already saying, about shaping the future and designing services that are fit for purpose, not the services that we think are right for people with dementia, but the services that people with dementia tell us are right for them. And also a key issue and one of the things we're doing today is obviously raising dementia awareness for people. Thank you. Thanks, Natalie. So a summary of sort of key takeaways. Dementia is one of the most critical issues for health, public sector and society in general. Now that we're managing COVID, I can't think of a more pressing issue than dementia and dementia care. Carers are fundamental, a critical element in managing the numbers of people living with dementia. Now, I put managing in quotes there because it's not a very nice term, but simply without carers, we would not cope. We haven't got the services out there. We will never have the number of services we would need if carers actually just decided they weren't going to care anymore. We need to continue to improve our understanding of dementia and our knowledge of dementia changes from day to day. I was at a conference yesterday and I was learning new things despite being with the society for 12 years. I learned some new things yesterday around dementia. And it is a continual need to improve our knowledge and understanding of dementia and have best to support people. We should never assume that we know more than a carer. Yes, you will know if you're a social worker, you'll know your social work far better than a carer. But a carer will really have an in-depth understanding of what their needs are and how their caring responsibilities impact upon them. And they'll often have a very good understanding of the person that they are looking after, that they are, their loved one. As I've said before, any one of us can get dementia at any age, at any time. And the Alzheimer's Society is here to help. We are there to support you. It's a free service. So the only thing that people are giving up is time, either to help yourselves or you may well refer people to the Alzheimer's Society if you feel that that's appropriate to do so. I've just got a couple of notes I just wanted to talk about. So there are, I think there are some quick wins, which are not on the slides, but a couple of quick wins. And there are things that we've developed, but we need to develop more of, excuse me. We need more peer support. One of the things that a lot of carers use our peer support services. So this is carers meeting with carers and discussing with carers their needs, their experiences, et cetera, and learning from each other. People tell us that's incredibly valuable, but we need more peer support. We need a better coordination of care. One of the difficulties and one of the frustrations that carers often tell us is that services don't talk to each other. And that therefore they're explaining one thing to one service, then they're explaining it again to another service, et cetera. We do need to coordinate more with that level of care. We also need to create safe spaces for people to talk, to talk openly about the frustrations, the anxieties, the fears that they have as someone living with, supporting someone living with dementia. And that is a role that the helpline provides as well. So people can speak to the helpline and talk about their fears and their anxieties, et cetera. But I think we need more of that going forward. We need to recognise the role of carers. We really need to tell people that are carers just how good a job they are doing. People don't hear very good news stories. They don't, they don't get told, actually, you know what, you're doing a fantastic job here. Often people concentrate on the negatives, the bits that they're struggling with. They don't concentrate on the vast areas that they're getting right. We need a better understanding from families and friends. The frustration of being a carer when you might have a brother or a sister or a daughter or a son that just don't understand the nature of your caring and how demanding it can be. And we've had situations quite regularly in the past where a carer has maybe managed to go away for a week and a brother or sister stepped in and looked after the loved one for a week. And when the carer comes back, the brother or sister just says, "I don't know how you were coping. I just don't know how you did it." And I did it for a week, not 52 weeks a year. I think longer term wins. We need to fast track access to therapies. People with, that are carers, people with dementia may well suffer from anxiety, they may well suffer from depression. And we need to get those people, the support they need as quickly as possible. We need quick decisions from carers. I worked a few years ago, and this is an extreme case, but I think it illustrates where it gets extreme. We were looking at continual care's funding for a lady with dementia. We had over two years, 30 meetings with professionals at this person's house to discuss continual care. She was finally given it in March. She died in May. Can you imagine how that must have felt for that family, for the pressure that that put on that family and the waste of money? 30 meetings. It's absolutely ludicrous. Again, that was a very extreme situation. Made worse by the fact that there wasn't that consistency of staff. So every time there was an assessment, we were going through the same things again and again and again. Because consistently, consistent services and consistent staff is actually quite crucial for people living with dementia and their loved ones and their carers. One of the things I'm really proud about, and many things I'm proud about with the Alzheimer's Society, is that our dementia advisors are people that go out, they meet people, they talk to people on a regular basis. We try for that person to be the same person throughout the journey of that dementia journey for that person. It means that they're not forming new relationships with people, they're not having to repeat themselves. They are dealing with someone they've met before who is aware of their situation and their case. And I think the other thing, and then I'm going to allow for questions if I may, if there are any questions, is life after caring. Not all, the carer doesn't always outlive the cared for. Sometimes the carer will pass before the cared for, but majority of the time, the carer will outlive their cared for. And then they're often left in a limbo. What do I do now? Where do I go forward? If they're a young carer, they may well have significant difficulties getting back into employment. For example, they may well also have some mental health challenges. They may well be dealing with grief. And they may also be dealing with guilt as well. So those are some of the issues I think are really important for us to consider. Next slide, Natalie. Okay, these are our contact details. Please feel free to contact us or the helpline at any point. Is it okay now to go over to questions, Ben?
Absolutely. Thanks so much, Mark. Thanks for the information there. And I think we're bringing Michelle on the screen as well, aren't we?
We are, please.
Brilliant. Thanks so much, Mark. Lots of information for us to learn from. So thank you so much for sharing that. We've had a few questions come through on the Q and A. Please do keep asking them. If anyone has anything else while we're talking, please add them on. I'll just go through them in reverse order. So the first question from Rachel was around her dad's been diagnosed with dementia by GP going for a blood test today and waiting for a scan. The question's around, do we know how long the scan will take? I'm guessing that's probably more for health colleagues to answer and depends on the individual case and the GP surgery, doesn't it? Mark and Michelle, please correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, most definitely. I think that would, I think that would be very much more something to answer from the health professionals rather than ourselves, I think. Is that right, Mark?
Yeah, although there is a bit of a postcode lottery. So it does depend on where the person's being diagnosed. And again, that's an issue that we have within the Alzheimer's Society about that. It can take six months to get a diagnosis. For some people, it can take, on average, it takes two years. And for someone under the age of 65, currently it takes four years to get a diagnosis.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. And the next question, and this is probably quite a common one, to be honest, from Rebecca, where someone's caring for their wife who's showing the typical signs of dementia and they're refusing to go to the GP, they're in a bit of denial about it. Is there any words of advice that you can give? And equally, is there any support groups in that area? And this is in the South Oxford area.
Okay. So, sorry, is the person living with dementia refusing to go to the GP?
Correct, yeah.
So in that situation, I would say, you know, the GP comes to the person, they have a duty of care. If the person's unable to come to the GP and they're going to get very anxious and very upset about that. And you're probably going to create a situation by trying to drag someone to the GP. The conversation needs to be had with the GP about either the GP comes out or a health visitor, a nurse, for example, comes out and sees the person in their own home.
Something that might be quite helpful, actually, Becca, would be to look at our Alzheimer's Society website. And we do have a memory checklist that you can print out. And it kind of gives you little descriptors of things. And you can tick yes, sometimes no. And that might help the person reflect and see some issues and difficulties that they're having. And then there can be a conversation perhaps about, you know, maybe we seek a little bit of advice here because there is support that we can get, you know, as well as emotional support. We offer financial support. We don't give the financial support, but we can signpost to helping people get benefits and that kind of thing. So having a look at that memory checklist might be a way forward to opening a conversation with the person that isn't so clinical perhaps, but encourages them to be a little bit reflective and they can reflect together with their loved one. Hopefully that will help. If you go to Alzheimer's website, you'll find it there. Just click in, type in the search engine, memory checklist.
Brilliant. Thanks, Mark.
The other thing I should have said, Ben, sorry, and just leading off on that is the Alzheimer's Society dementia advisors are there for people living with dementia, but they're also there for the loved one, for the carer. So, you know, as a carer, you can refer yourself in or someone can be referred in as a carer in their own right.
Makes sense. And then the next question from Jane, and there's two parts to this question, so I'll read out the first bit before the second part. So are there any plans for YOD services in the Oxford area as there is a need for this? And carers have been signposted to services that are too far away for them to take their loved ones?
Sorry, I missed the first, what was the first?
So it's are there any plans for YOD services? I'm not actually sure what the acronym stands for. I don't know if you have.
Young Onset Dementia.
Of course, of course.
Yes, sorry, yes. It's certainly something we can look at from society's point of view, but we are working with Uttlesford. So every, every area, every district in Essex has what we call an inclusive dementia community. And that's made up of stakeholders within that area. And Uttlesford has an IDC. It's a programme that's overseen by Essex County Council and by Michelle, who's, sorry, not Michelle, Mel Williams, the commissioner for Essex County Council. And one of their roles is to look at what's actually missing in their area and see if they can actually get that commissioned or if they can support organisations to set that sort of service up. My colleague Lyn Adams covers that area. So one of the things I will do is I'll go back to Lyn Adams and I'll just ask Lyn if we can maybe get that on the agenda for the IDC in Uttlesford.
Thanks so much.
And actually, we're working to develop some focus groups in different, the four different quadrants of Essex, with an idea of after that time limited focus group to work towards coming up with a service that is needed. So actually, the focus group in us also could be for people with young onset dementia and seeing what services they need as a result. That might be quite useful.
Yep, that's what you said. We've got three minutes left and three questions I can see. So I'll try and get through these at a faster pace. So what, so the second part to Jane's question is, what is the situation with the side by side service in Uttlesford? As it looks like referrals are not currently being accepted.
Yes. So I'm not aware of what the situation is in Uttlesford specifically, but I'm happy to come back to you on that.
Perfect. We can respond separately. That's, that's fine. So the next question from Richard is, "Does the Alzheimer's Society support adults with all forms of dementia? I'm assuming so, but unsure. If they do, wonder if people would think to contact, say, if they have vascular dementia?"
Yes, we have, it's come up an awful lot, actually. Very good question. We support everybody with any kind of dementia at all. The reason it's called Alzheimer's Society is because the guy years and years ago who first discovered this disease was called Joseph Alzheimer's. I think his first name was Joseph. So is Alzheimer's Society. But yes, anybody and everybody with any kind of dementia, we support.
Brilliant.
Please take focus on this, but we are having that conversation nationally around whether, you know, whether the Alzheimer's Society is really the right term, given what we actually do and the fact that we do support people across the board with dementia.
Yeah, it's an interesting point. And then the final question before we wrap up is just curious about Alzheimer's Society referrals. How quick or long is the timeline to action referrals, please?
It's a fantastic question. Thank you. Whoever that is, I need to pay you a fiver for asking that. So at the moment, referrals are going through and people will expect to receive a reply from us within five working days. So it's incredibly quick. So it's incredibly quick. We realise the importance of getting back to people or contacting people in the first instance as quickly as possible, rather than having a long waiting list. So please do make a referral through to us. We will respond very quickly and certainly within five working days.
Brilliant. I think that is everyone. So the final bit just to mention is, sorry, if I've quickly cut the screen. So first of all, just to say thank you so much, Mark and Michelle. There was so much information there, really useful. And thank you so much, everyone that's come along to listen. Great to have such a high attendance. It's such an important area. So thank you all for the time. Really do appreciate it. I was just going to mention as well that there's some follow on webinars this week, which I'll just post the information in the chat now for you to see. And they're also in front of you right now. So we've had the first three completed. We've now got, the remaining sessions this week are around advocacy support for carers, which takes place tomorrow between 11:30 till 12. And also employer support for carers, which takes place on Friday between 1 till 2pm. If you would like to attend those, please do book on. There's still time and we can make sure you've got the invite for those. If not, just to say we'll, we'll close the webinar now, but have a lovely day. Please do get in touch if there's anything else that you'd like to ask about or get information on. And thank you so much. We'll share the information afterwards.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.